We'll call the meeting in order for the day. First item is approval of today's agenda.
Make a motion to approve with the addition.
And deletion.
And deletion, yes.
Set.
Motion and a second to approve today's agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Citizens to be heard. You've got some kind of citizens out here, but they don't want to be heard yet, so. Approve, pay the bills and vouchers.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion to pay and a second to pay the bills. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of minutes from the July 9th, 2019 meeting.
Move second.
Motion and a second to approve minutes from July 9th. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Budget review, Sheriff's Office. Got a big crowd, you must want a lot.
Your pencils are sharpened.
Commissioners, in your budget packets, you should have page 26 to 31.
Well, thanks for having us this morning going through the budget. Let's start off on our 2003, the law enforcement revenue side. We are anticipating approximately $100,000 in increased revenue. And that would be another $7,300, some police relief aid, some local state funding through some training, along with another $18,000 for some training reimbursement. That's kind of been the norm over the past few years with the training. Our training reimbursements always better around $20,000 to $22,000, but we've always received more. So if you're going to accurately reflect the budget, we would add that additional $18,000 in there in the revenue side.
One of the reasons for that is there's some more mandated training that Bosa's making us go through, and they're giving us a little more money per deputy is why that revenue is going up. Don't know when that's going to sunset, so it's been a guessing game with the state on that revenue that we get. So hopefully they maintain that.
And some of the other increases, hopeful for $10,000 in K-9 donations, another $8,000 from U.S. Marshal Service. That's the U.S. Marshal's Task Force that we have a deputy assigned to that would be reimbursed overtime, and another $50,000 in our lease agreement increase with the city of Morehead. Some of the expenditures that we'd be looking at, we don't know what the compor study is going to be, so we don't know where that's going to be at to try and figure out salaries and things of that nature. The Association dues memberships, about $2,000 increase in that just because we're already over in this year's budget for it. I didn't realize what it costs to be a member of the Minnesota Sheriff's Association, but it's rather expensive dues and things like that. We also did an increase of $10,000 in the training. The more that we hire people and new people, the more training we have to send to them. And right now, our training budget is getting pretty thin. We've got a lot of people that want to attend training, and that just comes down to hiring new people and us needing to get them up to date on all the mandated training, along with having instructors and things like that with the Sheriff's Office. Another $5,000 in our uniforms. Again, when you hire new people, it gets expensive. In the past, we've said it costs about $2,000 to outfit somebody new once we hire them, but realistically, it's about $68,000 when Gabe sat down and started figuring things out, and it's pretty expensive to do that. And then another $50,000 increase for the squad car costs. We know that that's coming along. You know, that's about another $5,000, $5,000 to $8,000 increase per car next year for squad cars, depending on what we end up doing. The actual mark squads will be anywhere from $33,000 to $35,000 now. Yeah, they're getting pretty expensive. So we are looking at ways to maybe help save costs there, such as, you know, our mark squad cars have to be the Ford utility. They just, they seem to work the best. We can probably use a couple Dodge Chargers as well, which is a considerable savings. And then possibly for our admin and our investigations, we could use Dodge Rangles, and they're, they're less money than the, than the utilities. So we are looking at ways to save there, but this is a way to kind of get our internal service up to where it needs to be. And our only new request as far as on the Sheriff's Office side is going to be the additional day sergeant, which is a wage increase to $6,100. We feel that we need that day sergeant because we're still having a lack of coverage on weekends at times, and it would be nice to have that sergeant there. It just happened this weekend where somebody called in sick, where we were doing some hospital security for Becker County, and this individual was in the security detail, and nobody knew that he had called in, he had called in sick. So at least this way, he'd be able to call a sergeant, know that the sergeant would be able to make those adjustments to the hospital security details. So there's things like that that are happening, where it would be nice to have that additional sergeant and have that span of control over the weekends where we don't have somebody.
Excuse me, one more. What's the hospital security?
We're assisting Becker County. We were assisting Becker County for watching an inmate over at the hospital. They had.
What hospital is that?
It was Ascensia Hospital.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Ascensia in Fargo. It was an assist they've now since taken over, and we're just providing breaks to them.
Thank you.
Yep. The 205, the task force side, once again, we still have our cooperations with the U.S. Marshal's Task Force and the DEA Task Force, and they are reimbursing us for overtime when the deputies are working those details. Coroner expenditures, this is one of those where we just don't know where we're at on some of these sometimes, just because we don't know how many autopsies we're going to end up doing throughout the year. I think you're taking an average, correct?
Yeah, I'm going above an average, because some years we'd have 50 to 60, you know, 50 autopsies, and they're expensive to do, and we're mandated by statute to take care of that. And the other years, when it's lower, it's part of the cost of doing business for the Sheriff's Office.
So probably going into the corrections portion of the budget, is there anything for us?
I just had a question on the pistol permits. I think it was a couple of years ago, there was a big spike in that, and I noticed the last year it was down again, and you thought about adjusting the.
The thing with that, it's such a moving target with the political environment, the legislation or Congress says they're going to ban something. We get such an influx of people coming in. I mean, it'll sometimes five to tenfold of people come in for them. So that revenue from that, we have no idea how much it's going to be. And it's even tough to take an average over the five years, because it's impossible to judge.
Right, okay.
The Internal Service Fund, where does it show the auction money that you get? Because that goes back into your Internal Service Fund too, doesn't it?
Yes.
It does, yep.
Okay. Does that, does that show up? Does that offset this 350, or how is that, how do you?
Part of.
If that's, that's got to be revenue, so I would think it's got to show up on a revenue line item.
It does in the Internal Service Fund.
Okay, revenue item.
Yep, and it gets credited to their, their line item first, so that it stays, that cash stays with, with them.
Any other questions?
Not right now. So going back to this day sergeant, so are you proposing a new position?
No, it would not be a new position. We would use it with existing personnel.
Okay, but they, somebody would advance to.
Yep, somebody would advance into that sergeant position, yep. We would not be, we would not be asking for an additional deputy. We'd just be, just be promoting somebody that we currently have.
We'll start with the revenues. We are looking to increase our board care of prisoners. We are hoping to look at a contract with the Department of Corrections. We have a meeting with them already, and we're just waiting for some, some more information, but we're hoping we can sign up with one of their programs they have. Excuse me, they actually have two that are pretty interesting. One would be the work release DOC inmates, and then another one is a pilot project they're working on that might fit in really well with the river project. So we're hoping to see an increase in our revenue based on contracts. Then we'll just go on down to my expenditures. The first big change would be for us would be our professional services. There is an increase to that line item, and the increase there has to do with the river project. That's our behavioral health program we have. Last year, it was covered by grant, and the rest was covered under social services. Budget, we decided that that should be moved over to the jail budget. And the second item in there has to do with our act control system, which is a security electronics for the new facility. We do need to have a maintenance contract for that so that we can make sure that we keep that up and running. That is approximately $13,000 a year. One thing to note is with that, is act controls is also the juvenile detention center, and I am going to work with them and act controls to see if they could give us a better deal for a maintenance contract. Since we have two contracts in this area, they should be able to give us maybe a better deal for our contracts in future years. Then if we keep on going here, I really don't have a lot of increases in the budget. As a matter of fact, some of my items have reduced, for example, my salaries. I did have a couple of staff that did retire, which did provide some cost savings. In addition, I also reduced salaries for part-time just because of efficiencies of our current schedule and our staffing plan, we were able to reduce that number. Let's see here. The other big increase for us would be under equipment, and that has to do with our tasers. The jail has a taser plan with the company that if we pay so much every year, and at the end of five years, we get brand-new tasers. And additionally, we have a taser plan for cartridges, so that'd be a payment plan, so that we can turn cartridges every year for our staff. I checked with Lori about this, and she said it was a better way to do it than to put the money into internal service. It was actually, we saved some money, so that's how we're putting it in our budget this way.
Okay, I was going to ask that question to Brian.
Yeah, we, internal service is made for large items, and this is more of an ongoing expense.
The jail has two new requests. The first one is a fingerprint machine for the public. The jail does do fingerprints for the public for various jobs, and we get requests all the time. But in addition to that, we do the county employee fingerprints. Currently, we have an old machine that is not supported anymore by any type of software, so it's hit, miss if it works that day. We have limited our hours of availability for fingerprints because it is in our pre-book area of the jail. Once our lobby is open, we will open up those hours, so it's more readily available for staff as well as public. So it is a new request that we purchase a new machine, and we are recommending that the fees we charge the public for fingerprints pays for any maintenance on the equipment for future use. So the cost of a new fingerprint machine is $15,000 approximately. And that will include the printer as well as the machine.
Does that come with the software?
That comes with everything. So it's just a standalone unit, and you can, you can put it anywhere. We have actually built a, in our lobby for this fingerprint machine, because we were always hoping to have one there. And unfortunately, the one we have now won't probably make it that far, so we really are looking to get this in the budget so we can get this ordered and ready to go by the first of the year.
What do we charge the public?
$10.
Is that going to increase?
I don't think we need to. If you would like me to bring that back, but I think $10 is a fair price.
I'm just not familiar with what the going rate for fingerprints, fingerprinting is.
Let's do equipment, they just put their hand on it, don't they?
Yep, it's electronic.
Yeah. But we charge individual $10, huh? We don't go back to the company that sent them there, or?
Maybe turn around and get reimbursed by their company.
Right.
But a lot of times, it's for licensing for nursing, and they have to pay that out of their own pocket.
Right.
This is part of their fees they would have to pay. The second big, oh, sorry, do you have more questions about that?
No, that's, that's fine.
My second big item is a body scanner. Minnesota is passing a law that allows body scanners into the jail. We'd like to put one of these in our pre-book area, and the whole purpose of that is catch any contraband that is hidden within inmates, and we've had several incidences of that in our jail, and fortunately, we've been very lucky. It is a very big ticket item, and we need to do a little more research on what machine we would want to get here, but I just wanted to let you know about it, because it's something that I'm planning on looking at, researching, and coming back to the board as a request. But I do feel that we can use our commissary money to cover the cost of, if not all, most of this, this piece of equipment, so.
So we couldn't have included that in the build?
It hasn't been passed. It wasn't passed when we were talking about this, it's just July 1st is when we have signed the documents.
So that must be about $160,000?
Yeah, yes. And I got that cost figure from Cass County, because they were able to do this a couple of years ago, so I basically just used their information, just as a starting point for this.
I guess my question is, we couldn't use sales tax dollars to pay for it if it's required for the new facility?
It's not a requirement.
It's just being allowed by statute.
But it is, it's really important, because one, one loss.
No, I completely agree. We might be able to use bond money, I don't think we could use.
I just.
The sales, well, we could use the bond money, so, and we do, if we do have extra, we could possibly put it in the project now if we wanted to, I think.
Well, we had FFNE in there.
Yeah, so, so then we should be able to.
Okay.
If we have excess.
I think we should check that, Lori, because then I would also be eligible for the sales tax rebate.
Yeah, see, I don't, we could pay for it with the bonding money, but since it's not actually construction, I don't think we'd get the sales tax rebate done.
So we didn't get the sales tax rebate on the FFNE then?
No.
Okay.
I just think, you know, I agree with you, I think it's important. I just want to make sure that however we can pay it to ease.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think we should just keep that in mind separately right now. And I think, you know, as it stands right now, the additional bond dollars and we're wrapped with contingencies in those two projects, I think we're in a safe to maybe do that outside of the budget. It's going to be a one-time deal. Then we'd have to probably look at a small portion annually to go in for internal service.
Right. And that, we can put it in after that, yeah.
Yeah.
And in actuality, we may not even have to pay sales tax at all on this piece anyway.
Okay.
Because we would be paying for it ourselves.
Oh, okay.
And so, and so we may not have to pay sales tax on it.
So you have a fund built up in the commissary fund?
We do. We've been using quite a bit, but we have enough, I believe, to cover a good chunk in there. In the old jail, we didn't have the opportunity to buy much, because there's no place to do anything, but with our new programming and everything, we haven't spent some of that money now. It's pretty limited what you can use the money for, but security, we're pretty sure we can use it for that.
Good, I think that's a good way to cover that cost outside of levy. Can I, Mr. Can I, can I ask a couple of questions regarding the revenues? I see we have board and care of prisoners, where our revenues are projected up $100,000. Is that, is that for contracts for inmates? Is that what that is?
That would be for the DOC contracts that we're anticipating.
Okay. And with those, with that amount of anticipated inmates, and with your current population, what, what does that leave us with for, you know, vacancy?
Sure. Well, what's nice about the DOC contract is we can, it can fluctuate. It doesn't need to be a set 20 or a set 30. It can be what we need and what we have space available for. So it works really nice with what we want to do, because when we're running low, we can take a couple more on, if we're running, starting to run high, then we cut that back. The magic number for us at the jail is 150. Because if we hit that, I'll be regulating 150, I need to come back and ask for additional staff. But right now, we're running below that, so now would be a good time to try and get some net revenue.
So if you exceed 150, let's just say you went to 170.
Right.
How many additional staff?
Once we hit the 150 point, it's just one more staff.
Okay.
So that will cover up.
So I guess my.
180 what? I'm sorry.
188.
Okay, so my, my, my point there is if, if we have the room and the facility capacity to handle it, and we could increase, and even if we went over the 150, the revenues might be sufficient to more than cover the cost of the one person.
That's what we're hoping for.
Right? And that's, so I, so I think we need to be looking closely at that. We might as well take advantage of that facility and, and use it to, you know. But I, I just think that, you know, I think there could potentially be room for more revenue there.
Oh, I agree, I agree. But we didn't want that put into there until we had something more for.
Okay.
Because right now, we don't have that contract.
Yeah, and how about, how about, I remember years ago, we used to have stuff with the U.S. Marshals too. Are we not anymore, or?
We have a few in there right now, but part of the problem with the U.S. Marshals is that if we have to take them to any appointment, then it's going to be two armed deputies.
Oh, okay, so we have to provide that?
Yeah, we'd have to provide that. So then we'd be coming to you and asking for probably more staff on the Sheriff's Office side for that.
That's why you have, the DOC contracts are pretty, look pretty good for us, because it's something we can accomplish.
And are there any other counties within the area that are in need of space?
Actually, we have been taking a few from Attlehead or Becker, individuals who are arrested in, in those locations but work here, and so they do their time locally here, and then I charge them, and they're, they're paid by the inmates. So we've had quite a few of those, pretty consistently, at least one the last four months.
Okay. I know, I know on the regional side, when we open up that new regional detention, when we open up that, there's going to be really opportunities for non-member revenue, and I guess I'm kind of thinking this on the same line here, if we can make that work.
And I've reached out to Attlehead, I know that we do have space available, because they're probably the ones who are reaching capacity, and they don't have the ability to add beds at this time, so.
Okay.
The only last thing I have in mind is that we are working on a list for Lori for all big equipment items that we need to put in general service, so that's not reflected. And I actually never had a line item for that, but we're working on that.
That we're never in there before.
Correct. So security electronics, all the kitchen equipment, which is, you know, quite extensive, and then the laundry equipment, so we're going to have something set aside for that.
Well, so much for saving that $160,000.
She's got commissary funds, remember?
Yeah, but can't use it, unfortunately.
Well, there's certain things you.
Yeah, there's always certain things inmate-related. I know they won't consider still.
Well, the kitchen's related to inmates.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think it does apply that, so.
Hey, don't they?
Julie, I have a question on the west side. Are you, is the terminal being used? I haven't been at the law library meeting.
Yep, yep, it's being used. We have it located in our Maple units.
Okay, do you feel like the one is enough?
I think for right now, it's enough, because we really don't have a location for a second one. I think once we get everything done, it'd be something we could revisit next in 2020.
So could commissary funds go to purchase another terminal?
I would believe we could use that, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. I do want to add that, I'll give a note report on our dringer, but yesterday, our construction committee got to tour the current phase that's going on there, and I'll tell you what, what a well-planned, it's really looking good. It's coming right along, and I'm really impressed with the design of it, and how, and that obviously had to have an awful lot of input from Julie and your staff, and the sheriff and all of you, so.
Thank you.
Congratulations on that, that's really looking good.
Gabe's next.
Yeah, mine is a whole lot of change from the previous budgets. Salary goes down a little bit, just because I haven't been here as long as Brian. Really, the only increase I'm looking for is in the training budget. I just, there's additional trainings I need to go through to get my certification, so I did ask of that.
Page 34.
Oh, I'm sorry. So I'm looking at an increase of $1,000 in that. Nicole Reno, one of our deputies, also was assigned as the Assistant Leadership Management Director, so there'll be some additional training that she needs to go through. That's really the only, like I said, increase I'm looking for. I did decrease in a couple areas, and the nurse is a normal breakdown night salary, health insurance went up a little bit, so that's reflected in the proposed budget. The paramedic here went down a little from Brian's previous, so not too much change.
Okay. Any questions for Gabe?
What's the miscellaneous?
The miscellaneous revenue, that 7663, is that what you're looking at?
Uh, 6820.
The expense side.
I think that's what we were talking about.
So 24,921.
$24,000.
What was the number again?
The fund 6820.
Oh, that was a grant for, I, I think it was, shouldn't be in the 19th. It was a grant received for radios for some of the fire departments, and what I believe has been allocated.
So there's a $10,000 for 2020, so it's a two-year grant?
I think I'm looking at the wrong one. I don't see that.
Sorry, Steve, do you have it?
It is 6820. I don't see the $10,000.
It says proposed 2020.
Proposed 2020.
It's $10,000.
Well, it's that one, we're taking that out. Brian always put in a proposed, it wasn't ever really used, a $10,000 in the event there was a grant match, so it would kind of be set aside. But in talking with Lori, we were just going to pull that, and we have never really used it.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for these?
The only other one that I had to cover would be the dispatch center.
Oh, okay.
Just real briefly. Through negotiations, we were able to get, get a 2020 budget passed for our dispatch center. An increase to the Sheriff's Office budget would be $13,000 for their regular budget and another $4,000 for their special assessments for the new world contract and licensing to maintenance and things like that. Overall, increase to their budget is 2.78% to the regional dispatch budget itself. For us, it's, won't be as bad as it is, because we do get reimbursed by our rural cities and things like that as well.
And we'll have to go through another negotiation after the census of 2020.
Sure.
For our percentages with the rural counties, plus their percentages that we're paying dispatch is probably going to change because of West Fargo's growth and usage.
Yeah, that's what I would think.
To follow the MetroCog for that?
Yes.
Okay.
So I have one question. Gabe was mentioning, Lori, that health insurance went up, but we don't have the rates going, isn't that, don't we have that as a line item on just the front page?
Yeah, we have a, we have a chunk that we put in there.
Yeah.
And so we don't have the final number yet.
But, but we didn't apply any numbers to any.
Not for.
Health insurance increases on line items in this, on the budget sheets, correct?
No, not for, not for 2020 yet. No, but I will, once we get the number.
Yeah, okay. Did you plug it directly into that, or do we just have a line in like a new cola?
I, I, what I do is, once I get the rate, then I plug it in where it belongs, in each department.
Okay.
We didn't used to do that.
Yeah.
But starting in 2019, we, we did actually break it out, so everybody's budget reflects it accurately.
Okay. Okay. And then, and then the, all of, all of these salary line items so far that we have within here include steps.
They include steps, correct.
But not any cola, no, and of course, not the wage adjustments.
Well, I did on your copy. I've got two different budgets.
Okay.
So for, for your copy that you have today, I did put that in for our discussion later on.
Okay, and that, and that, and that deals with the wage study?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll learn more about that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Julie, you've got to stick around.
I'm going to stick around.
Here, have a cup.
Thank you. Request to change job description for a full-time jail office associate.
Yes, Delane is retiring. She's retiring a little earlier than we had hoped. So with that, we are looking to. that, we are looking to change the job description at this point, because the position has changed over the years, and with us moving into our new facility and having a front lobby, we really need to have that manned during normal business hours, and so instead of asking for one and a half to cover the vacancies for vacation, sick time, we felt there was a good efficiency option to change the job description to the same as a sheriff's office, so that there could be cross-training going on, and so if we have a sick time or vacation, somebody from the sheriff's office could go over to the jail and, and help cover over there, at the same time, they could still do the same duties that they would do at the sheriff's office, because much of the work can be done electronically, in addition, that person can help Monday mornings, they're very busy for the sheriff's office, they can take on those duties over at the jail to assist, to get the paperwork done and down to the county attorney's office, I know it's kinda been a struggle, because there's so much work that has to get done by a certain time every morning, the job has changed through the years, and there's quite a bit of things we'd like to add to it, for example, a lot of financial stuff, the billing, getting these contracts and all that stuff, it really, we need somebody with a little more technical background and a degree to handle some of the workload, and again, if they're doing the same job duties that they're doing at the sheriff's department, it should be reflected into the job description at the jail.
Okay.
One thing to note, there is no cost impact for the budget for the next couple of years, because our person was at the top of the grid, this person will be starting at the beginning of the grid, so it wouldn't be an impact for us financially.
Okay, we discussed this at PIC last week, and I think with, the request is made, is makes good sense, so I think both Jenny and I have supported her request, so.
So, so those, that, that wage would go from the corrections line item to the sheriff's firm line?
Actually, we would keep it in our budget.
Oh, you still keep it, oh, it's just where you house them, what you call it right now?
Right.
Our, our Monday mornings are getting busier and busier, it seems like the county's getting busier out there, and there's a lot more reports coming in, so Monday mornings get to be rather hectic for our staff over there, so having somebody else at the jail, correctional center, at the correctional center, that would be able to help do some reports and things like that, would definitely, would, would kinda streamline some things.
Okay.
I approve the request. Second.
Motion and a second to approve the request, any further discussion? Hearing and all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, and then you have one more.
One more, I have a vacancy, one of our officers is moving to Wisconsin, we knew he was leaving us, he gave us about a year's notice, and it was pretty hard to see him go, we spent the last year trying to convince him to stay, but we couldn't do it, so I'm requesting to fill his full-time position.
With board's wishes.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the request, any further discussion? Hearing and all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries, there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Janell, come on up, request to fill vacancy for full-time office and administrative specialist. Good morning.
Good morning. Yes, I am here because we had an office and administrative specialist resign, she currently is working for Otter Tail County, and so I'm looking to backfill her full-time position. I'm not sure at this time if we have a current staff that might transition, look to work that full-time position, and so I'm also requesting, if that were to occur, the ability to backfill her position, which is 30 hours a week.
With board's wishes. Any questions for Janell on this?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the request, any further discussion? Hearing and all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries, there you go, Janell.
Thank you.
Thanks. Budget review, building, maintenance, and family service center, Joe in Georgia, the Joe in Georgia show.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Question, sorry, did we do the transfer funds for the K9?
That's-
That's been, they took that, that was one that was-
Sorry.
Good morning.
Good morning, I'll just go over the family service center portion of it first.
Mr. Chair, that's 72 to 74 for Georgia, so, okay, thank you.
Okay, so 72, the first page, general service fund, that's our postage and copies that we incur for revenue in the mail copy room, the second line of miscellaneous revenue, that's the mailroom staff, they job share with social services, so we contract them all for four hours of the day, so that's the revenue we incur from social services, phone and fuel, is from Lakes and Prairies, or they get their fuel charges via the city of Morehead through us, I don't know, do you want me to go through each individual one, or are you going to go by the highlights? Okay, I guess the rest are pretty much the same, we're pretty much status quo, all the way down, even through the bottom section of the line, which would be my budget, the building manager portion, on page 73, which is actually more the operating portion of the building, the revenues, we're looking for a little bit of an increase there, the service charge would be the paper, and the maintenance charges, we charge out for maintenance staff, and then the second line is revenue that we incur from the juvenile staff, or providing services for the juvenile, the next portion, the 65, 111, that's for the building, you'll see a little bit of an increase there, actually, quite a bit, and we just kinda guessed it after this year's winter with the snow removal, we are looking at a little bit of an increase, and then we also increased, I guess I jumped ahead there, some of our utilities for Morehead Public Service and Gas, otherwise, the remainder of the budget would remain the same, with a slight increase for those three items that we did increase. Page 74, we did increase it a little bit for rent, some of it is due to we didn't have an actual overall building rent increase, but we do have an increase for some of the tenants that were paying under the actual rental amount that we're bringing up to the, the standard, right, so we are receiving some increase in the rental amount, the 5830, that's for vending, that pretty much maintains about the same, and I guess the rest is pretty much standard, there aren't really any increases in this portion of it, I am requesting, and Joe will go over that in his portion, we share the custodial staff under the building maintenance staff, but I oversee the staff, and I am requesting two full-time positions for custodians at the new correctional facility, but Joe will touch on that as far as dollars in his building maintenance budget. Any questions?
Questions for Georgia?
How much do you lose rental income with Ruth, and if we lose some tenants over there?
Um, that is being proposed, you'll see that in the social service, Rhonda has that, will generate the revenue from another tenant moving in there, which is proposed to be social services, assuming that goes through.
Any other questions for Georgia? Joe?
So, the building maintenance budget, is that?
Uh, page 22 and 23.
Okay, it has a little bit different look this year, we, in the past, this budget's been kinda, buildings have been kinda sorta blended together, and so what we did this year is we created sections within this budget for each building, so we're trying now, separated out the law enforcement center and the jail, and the DMV and the courthouse, so we've, we've, we've done that, and it seems like it's been an easier way to track things budget-wise, so with the new buildings, the law enforcement center and the jail, we've also broken down, you know, what, the staff work in what building, custodians particularly, and so we've created a salaries line item under each of those two new buildings too, so we can kinda track what it costs to, to maintain those buildings, so we also created a building repair and maintenance line and a custodial supply under each of these, these two buildings here to, to track that too, so, but really, other than that, the, the snow line item, Georgia has one in her budget, and I have one in mine, and we've asked to increase that, because it was a heavy winter last year, and I think now we're around 4,000 over right now, with a couple months left to go, so we're, we feel like we should pay attention to that line, given that we're gonna have the increased parking lot and everything over at the law enforcement, or the correctional facility, so, so we had asked to increase that one, I believe we took it from 39,000 to 50,000, in hopes that that'll cover that extra surface, other than that, yeah, the big, big one is the new custodians, and what we did there is we tried, we're budgeting that one under the jail, under the salaries there too, so, and there's an increase of, new request of 101,000, so, other than that, that's what I got.
Questions for Joe? It's gonna be pretty easy on you guys.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, we have one other item, it wasn't listed, but he's a big part of it, we rebid our elevator service contracts for the campus, we had been in a, an ongoing service agreement, and it automatically renews for five years, and we've never re-quoted it until this year, one of the elevators is still under service agreement with the new correctional facility, but we did re-quote it, and we actually sent it to three vendors, and we received two quotes, and we're recommending go up the low quote of orders for 1305 per month, and that would be a five-year contract.
Make a motion to approve the lower quote.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing and all in favor, signify by saying aye, both same side, motion carries, there you go. Thanks. Anybody need a break yet? We can do, let's do our committee reports, get that done. Jenny?
Thank you, last week, I attended the PIC committee, and we covered the issue with the jail and upcoming quarters office, she would've talked about the wage study that we'll talk about in the closed session, so I believe that covers that piece, that evening, I attended the planning commission meeting, we had the installation of our new planning commissioner, Laura Johnson, there were four items on the agenda, one, a request for an interim use for Asphaline excavating in Scree Township, that, that one did pass, the next one was in the Hutterite Colony in Spring Prairie, was seeking basically to address some issues to conform to what's currently allowed, and so there was a recommendation to this board, and we'll hear that in the upcoming weeks, but I just, I really felt like there was a lot of collaboration with not only the township, but taking into account concerns neighbors will have, or do have in that development, there are some road issues that, that we will need to address moving forward, the usage on those roads has really increased, and there's some legitimate concerns from neighbors, and so Dave from the highway was there, and I, I think that that will prove to be beneficial to have them weighing in on those permits as we go forward, so.
And they're getting called in that one?
After the fact?
After immediately.
Were the concerns addressed, or?
Well, I guess they're not, you guys disapproved that, is that the one?
It's, well, it's a petition for rezoning that will come to this board, so that has, I think what you're talking about is the one that got-
Disapproved, the one you guys disapproved.
Right, so, um-
Excuse me, I was the one I had.
That's okay, so then the other one was a request for an interim use for Aggregates Industries, and they are taking over a mine that had been mined by another company, and there were just some concerns in there that the planning commission had, so that was denied, so I'm not sure if we'll get an appeal on that one, or, yep, Tony's shaking his head, it's definitely coming this way, so.
You say the rest is okay?
Uh, it hasn't been filed yet, but the woman who came and advocated on behalf of Aggregates Industries did meet with Matt Jacobson the next day and discussed her appeal options, all, all likelihood.
Right, and I think part of the concern is that there were, there is a neighboring permit that is in operation, and it was when we allowed permits to be 24 hours, and I think that a lot of the concerns for neighbors had to do with that permit, not so much the permit there, but anyway, you'll hear more on that later, but, and then there was another interim use permit from Summit Sand and Gravel in Keene Township, and the township spoke with no concerns, and so that one was passed as well. Then I had MetroCog later on that week, good presentations in terms of, there was a 76th Avenue corridor study on the North Dakota side update, and, and I think that as Fargo develops in that area, and as this plan for 76th Avenue is going forward, I think that on the Minnesota side, that's something that are, you will want to keep fresh in, in the discussion of the highway, highway tracking, in terms of, you know, if there would be a possible river crossing there, and what that could mean for Clay County, because it, from the discussion they had, it, as soon as it's upgraded, there will be substantial development along that corridor, in terms of what they're studying, so.
That's been an, I have a discussion for years-
Right.
In terms of future corridor there, and Clay County always had a difference of opinion where that should be, in regard to what Fargo may have wanted, but I, I think it's important that we review it.
Right, right, so, that's coming forward, there's a presentation on a rec plan, the planning stages of the North Dakota side of the diversion, what activities could go in along that, and we had a presentation on the CASC Lake Community Land Trust Board, which we had had at this, the week prior, and then had an update on the furniture proposals for the remodel, that evening, I had Lakes and Prairies Community Action, good reports from the economic empowerment and housing, housing programs there, let's see, talked a little bit, continued to discuss the property that was purchased in Breckenridge, that they won't be developing on for a few years, but it's proving to be problematic, so, but yesterday, I attended the Lakeland Mental Health Board in Glenwood, they had a open house for their new offices in the Glenwood area spaces, they talked about the proposal for full-time mental health practitioner that was submitted to the juvenile center, and I think that was well-received by neighboring county delegates, they just have seen how that's been a positive collaboration, and we're continuing to work with how the hands-free law will affect employees, so they're addressing that, and we are, had reviewed the client referral source survey, and access in Morehead is going down, as you recall, that it was up to four weeks to get in to see a psychiatrist, and so thankfully, they, that's decreased, but that considers higher points.
Kevin?
On Wednesday, the 17th, we had a special meeting of the diversion authority to conduct interviews with three candidates for the executive director position, that will be on the agenda for this Thursday's board meeting to potentially select one of those three. On Thursday, the 18th, we had our regional juvenile detention meeting, and Tom from Construction Engineers kinda gave a visual tour of the place, right now, it's kinda chaotic in there, so we wanted, trying to avoid having a lot of tours going on in there. We did approve the preliminary budget for 2020, and again, we're using that new formula now, where it's a two-year lookback, and fortunately for Clay County, this, this year, our number's been down, so, so we're gonna actually see a, a reduced cost based on the bed usage, we did talk about, quite a bit about the current project, and we, we talked about the overages that are going on right now, or the contingencies being completely used up, and there's still more, seems every week, there's something new that comes up on the contingencies, and so there was some- And so, there was some concern on the part of the board as far as, you know, how those are going to be covered. And I know we talked about, Lori has looked and we've got somewhere around 270, $280,000 that, on bond money from the, when we got that premium. And so, a portion of that we're, we're suggesting could be earmarked for that. In addition to that, there was 2018 year budget, there were revenues over expenditures in excess of 300,000. And so, they're, they're saying that that should be used too before any, I, I think they're, what they're trying, hopefully what they're saying is let's, let's not have to ask for a cash call by each member, so. And I think we've got room there, you know, based on those two items. And then, and of course, James said that even in 2019, they're running revenues over expenditures, so. Their big concern was, was that, we're looking forward to the opening of that facility because then it's going to really be able to expand our revenues potential. Then on the, yesterday, we had a diversion chairs meeting, coordination meeting in the morning. Several things going on there and I, you know, I think in, there's been some discussion about the land acquisitions in Minnesota that, you know, I, I think we're looking at potentially $50 million worth of either land purchases or easements for, on Minnesota properties that are impacted by the diversion project. So, that's kind of, that's what's budgeted right now in the diversion authority budget for land acquisitions or easements in Minnesota and Clay County. Then we had the jail construction meeting. There's really not a whole lot going on, new going on there. It's progressing nicely. I mentioned this morning that we took a tour of that facility and that's really coming along nicely. There's no major, I think overall, we're still between the, all the projects are still, our contingency is still at about a half million dollars for all those who are, we're sitting quite well and that's, we're nearing completion, you know, we're getting close to the end on that, so that's a good sign. I can't, I wish I could say the same for the Regional Juvenile Center. We had a meeting yesterday and once again, we, we learned of more, more things that are going to have to come out of contingencies that aren't there. And I don't know, I think maybe what I'll do is I'll, I'll let Stephen get into the details of that in his report. But we got some more not-so-good news yesterday and I'll let him get into the details in his report. That concludes my report.
Thanks, Frank.
The last Tuesday afternoon, I went with Dave Overbaugh. We toured my district as far as the roads and stuff like that because I'm getting a few calls of roads, so. We drove quite a few roads.
I see they're graveling a bunch of those this week.
No, they're finally, yeah, they're getting some gravel out there now, they're starting to gravel more, you know. We gotta get up in the, in the northern part of the county too, you know, as, oh, drove the roads there. Yeah, they need, they need work, but they, they're in a lot of trouble there this winter, so they're working on them. Wednesday, I went up to the Wild Rice. There, they're, they're in their new building now, they've still got some finishing work to be done there, but the Wild Rice and the Red River Water Jet Board are in a senior building up there and that's working out real good. Got a nice building up there now and a good place for meetings. Then we have to have some discussion on appointments, who's gonna, between Becker and Clay County, who's going to be appointing directors for that Wild Rice Water Jet Board. The afternoon, I went to Historical Society. We got an audit, the audit report was given there. Again, they gave us a, it's a word that I really don't understand, but unmodified report, but I guess that's good, if that's what the word means, but, so it was a good, a good report for the Historical Society. Plus, there's some, they had some meetings with the city of Moorhead. They're thinking about charging for certain fees over there, either for rent or whatever. I think there's going to be some movement in that building and, so we have to, there'd be further discussion on the rent over there. Also, there's 1,100 members in the Historical Society, so that part's going real good. I mean, again, got a good membership and got good programs going on. Thursday, Jim and I went over, Governor Walz was there and Representative Lean and Mark Wood and Senator Egan gave a good report and Governor Walz pretty much reported pretty much on how well he thinks it works together with the unilateral Republican and Democrat on each, each house controlling one thing there. They felt it was working real good, so. Saturday, well, just for information, I went to Lloyd Hansen. One of our equipment operators died and I went to his funeral down in Rollock and good representation of his fellow workers there just left. So, that was my report.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you. On, on Tuesday, I attended the early childhood initiative meeting and we had a report from Healthy Family Associate and the nurse practitioners dealing with retirement of Nurse Linda, hoping to find a replacement soon. As you know, it's difficult to find nurses. And then we heard an amazing report from Public Health about one of our nurses working with a nursing mother who was sentenced to jail for 45 days, being able to express her milk while incarcerated in jail through the assistance of the staff. It was our nurse and her family members in the correctional staff stepping up to facilitate the baby not having to go on formula during the mother's incarceration period. Afterward, the mother sent Public Health a note of gratitude and stating that it would not have happened without the assistance of the nurse. And then we heard a report following about the longest table event held in June. We will be receiving a detailed report in the next meeting. And the event was held in Billworth this year. And then also, that same day, I attended the Adult Mental Health Local Advisory Committee meeting and providers reporting full caseloads with waiting lists comment. That's not unusual or new. Crisis team reports volume slightly less than that was good. And Abdul Ahi Mohammed and Ahmed Kari from the Metro Behavioral Health attended again and will be presenting information at the AMHLAC meeting about their services in September. And this is important because of the language difficulties with many of the people that have recently moved to the community not being able to express themselves in English. And so, we were, we're lucky to have these two gentlemen there from the Twin Cities originally. I think they opened an office in Moorhead and we will, we heard a discussion of the many challenges encountered by mental health providers. And then on Thursday, I attended the legislative wrap-up with Governor Walz along with Commissioner Gross. And then later that afternoon, along with Commissioner Mojo, I attended the MetroCog and we heard the presentation about the 76th Avenue South Corridor. And some of the numbers that they were projecting with that were amazing. They said that, that soon after they would get that constructed, no matter what form it takes, it would be carrying something like 50,000 cars per day. And the big discussion was whether that's going to be part of a beltway. And you've probably heard this before numerous times, but it was new to me. And so, those are my reports.
Does, between this, this MetroCog, do they, do they look at a long-term east-west deal with, with a potential for connection to I-94? Or is that, is that part of the discussion?
It's part of the discussion, yeah. It's, that's at the transportation technical level, but yes.
Wasn't it I-29, not 94?
No, no, I, because, you know, as, as you, as you go east into Clay County, further south you go, you can almost go straight and still run in to I-94 because I-94.
Well, and that's what, that's the discussion I've had with several of you about what the traffic you see onto, this thing, jumping off of I-29, cutting across to Barnesville on I-94. And so, there are people that are using it as such. You know, I think now, as the Convent Road is, a lot of the traffic goes on the Convent Road, jumps on 52 to Barnesville or hops down on 75 and kind of zig-zags eight or two across, so.
Or to 11 and to 94.
Yeah.
But I know at one time, there was some discussion about could, could one of those arteries end up going east all the way and connect, having another connection to 94? I'm just curious if MetroCog's talked about that.
They've talked about it a little bit, but I think that without, you know, we don't have an engineer rep on that, or, and so, you know, without knowing specifically what Clay County's engineers have said in those technical meetings, I'm not exactly sure in the direction of God, which is why I want to make sure that's on top of, top of mind because specifically with the new schools that...
I, the reason I bring that up is, is you, you know, you start to look at, when you have areas of growth like the Fargo-Moorhead area, and it's, it's similar to what Minneapolis-St. Paul did with their 494, 694 corridors. So, you've got, you've got your way to go around cities and that's kind of what I'm talking about. You know, long-term, is that something that they're doing?
Well, you know, I know a year ago, we had a pretty substantial conversation about it and I think Commissioner Pepcorn from Fargo had kind of stemmed the discussion specifically about railroads. And if, if you were to get, you know, the railroad diverted around the city, could you then have that road as you're talking about, how would that look? Obviously, we all know it takes an act of God to move railroads, you know, we could plan the road.
Okay. My reports, we had the PEC committee and we already heard from Julie on her issue and the Recorders Office will be up next and they've got a request and we'll be listening to that. And I had the diversion interviews and we had three good candidates, so it's going to be a tough decision to make, but the good part of it is, we did have three good candidates to pick from. And then they had the detention advisory meeting and that went very well. And yesterday, the jail and detention center meetings for construction. That was it for me, so.
Can I make a follow-up on our discussion? One of the other points that we said maybe made more sense is to have some sort of connection between, on the northeast quadrant. And so, you connect by 336 up to I-29 north of town. And so, you try to figure out, you know, where, where it makes the most sense, if that would be used most, but I think Gunkelman had said that that probably would make...
Well, I think, I think, you know, I think there was, there was discussion about it, the north one and the south one, the north one, you know, the talk has been about 26.
Makes sense, yeah.
That goes right over from I-29, you can go straight east all the way, you know, but it also has a connection then to 336, so.
And they were talking about on the south end, whether 76 is the way to go for this beltway or maybe 88 or even 100.
Because 76 on the North Dakota is 80 at them, ours, right?
Yeah.
And that runs directly into Saban? Or is it a mile?
Come on up, Kim. Hey, Budget Review, Recorders Office.
Yes, good morning.
Page 20. What page, Steve?
Page 20. So, I'll start with going over my revenues. On the top part there for that first line, I did decrease that a little bit because we are seeing a little bit less documents being recorded. The second line, I did increase our revenue there. Earlier this year, the board did approve me to increase the fees for our subscribers, so that's why we're seeing the increase in revenue. Otherwise, the equipment fund and the compliance fund, the next two lines, those we meet with the committee and I brought that report to you earlier this year. And then we did have a small increase in vitals. We are seeing quite a few customers come to our office to request items to obtain their driver's licenses, so we did do a little bit of an increase there. Moving down to the expenses, I do have a new request in there for, under the salary portion, but we can cover that in my next agenda item if that's okay with you. And then going down, starting at the first line there, I have an increase of 100% in the telephone line. That is just to get a hotspot for working remotely in our office. The next two have stayed the same. And then professional services, you will see that's 100% increase there, but it's really only a $500 increase in the total overall budget. Same with my meals, not related to overnight travel, it's 100% increase, but it's only an additional $100 that I put in there. Travel and expenses, I did increase that slightly. And then the line below that, office supplies, that has remained the same. And then our equipment fund, that is that same, it's an expense at the bottom, but then we revenue it out at the top and we keep those the same in and out. And then our computer software for expense, we did have an increase in our fee from our vendor, so I did increase that one slightly. Do you guys have any questions on my budget at this point?
Questions for Kim? It'll be easy on you, Kim.
Hey, that's good, thank you.
We have a request for office reorganization too.
Yes, so last week, I did bring this to the PEC committee. I am looking to reorganize our office back to the structure it was prior to me being appointed. I would like to add the chief deputy position back into our office. I feel it's important, I rely heavily on one deputy more than others in our office and I feel that they should be compensated for that. This person is also a key part of my succession planning for in the Recorders Office and they would make decisions in my absence. The cost of implementation for 2019 would be $1,156.11. I did indicate in my memo that that would be covered in this budget. As of late yesterday afternoon, I discovered that it, it would not be covered in my budget already, so that would be an additional cost to implement it this year. And then going forward, it would be roughly under $3,000 a year.
Okay. We didn't discuss this at the PEC committee meeting and we were all in agreement that it was a good plan and probably necessary to do for the Recorders Office, so. You want to have any other issues or questions they'd like to hear?
I just think to clarify that it's, it's not a new position, it's just a reclassification and this is something when you were appointed, didn't, we didn't have it and you said, well, I'm going to see how it works without it and it's become, I don't want to say problematic, but it's an issue that kind of delays your efficiencies if you are gone. And I think specifically, since we've talked to departments about succession planning and how do we best implement something, this follows pretty closely with those guidelines.
Thanks, Senator. Any other questions? The board's wishes?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the request. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Full, same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Kim.
Thank you.
Budget review for Lake Agassy Library, come on up.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
I have two handouts for all of you, just a copy of the budget for 2020. And then a map that I'll talk about in a little bit here. So, thanks for the opportunity to come here today to talk about Lake Agassy Regional Library and about the budget request for 2020. I'd just like to mention that Holly Public Library, the Barnesville Public Library and the Uland Link site are all doing very well. So far in 2019, despite the cold weather and closures this winter, we've seen an uptick in the amount of materials that are actually being checked out from Holly and Barnesville. And also, we are offering a downloadable ebook service and this is just so popular in our rural communities. It's just, we can hardly even keep up with the demand. So, Clay County is loving that as well. Right now, all of our libraries are very active with the Summer Library Experience, which is our summer program for youth across the region. We really encourage youth to read throughout the summer months and encourage families to attend free programs. It's not uncommon in Holly and Barnesville. It's not uncommon in Holly and Barnesville to have over 60 kids and families in attendance for a program like this. And then also, of course, many rural Clay County residents are using the Morehead Public Library as well. The Morehead Public Library is now busier than ever. Our attendance for programs has been so high that we've actually had to remove bookshelves to accommodate all the people who have been coming to the programs. In Morehead, we're also offering a new notary service, which is free to the public. It's been very well received by our community members. And we have also been very active in the Clay County Early Childhood Initiative, as Jim was mentioning earlier. We did, we were active with the Longest Table Event in Dilworth, and also the Morehead staff and the Lake Agassy staff are very active with the Morehead Public School Summer Parks Program, Lunch Program. And so right now, a librarian from Lake Agassy Regional Library, along with a teacher and a social worker, are all attending the Summer Parks Lunch Program sessions, offering storytimes, and also just really creating that connection with parents and children in some areas of Morehead where children are having a hard time coming to the library. We're hoping, right now, we're currently offering this partnership in maybe three parks. We're hoping to expand this more in 2020 because we've had so much success with it. Also, I wanted to mention that this legislative session, we did receive a slight increase in funds from the Arts and Cultural Heritage Fund, the leg, for legacy programming. And our legacy programs across the region have been very, very popular. We've had so much success, and we often offer our legacy programs with the legacy funding in our libraries and our link sites, but we also offer programs in schools, such as in Yulin Hitterdale and in the Barnesville and Yulin Senior Centers. So I just encourage all of you to keep an eye open for these free legacy programs that will be offered this fall. There's truly something for everyone. Again, we'll be offering them in our libraries, our link sites, and in some other community venues as well. Regarding the budget request for 2020, you'll see that we're asking for an increase of This is a slight increase over what we've been asking in previous years. Unfortunately, last fall, we found out that we'd be seeing a health insurance increase of 22%. We haven't seen a health insurance increase in maybe 10 years or so. We knew it was going to be coming eventually, but still, we were pretty shocked by that 22%. That was an additional $61,000 to our budget, and so that is why this year we're asking for slightly more than what we have asked for in the past. Do any of you have any questions about services we're offering in Lake Agassy Regional Library or about the budget request?
Questions for Liz.
So the, the, the 4% that you're looking at increase on personnel, that, that includes increases for, not just the salaries, right?
It's salaries and benefits.
Yeah, salaries and benefits.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, Liz, appreciate it.
Yeah, I just also wanted to point out the map that I handed out. It's just something for you to take a look at if you're interested, but we're able to map out where library customers reside within our counties, and so it's just kind of interesting to take a look at these maps sometimes, to see that, for instance, the bluish, purplish dots on the map, there are people all over Clay County using the Morehead Public Library. You can see that some of, some of our library customers are going to Detroit Lakes or to Norman County for library services, but it's just all a part of being a member of that consolidated library system model.
Great track.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. See you next year.
Kathy, come on up. Request to fill vacancy for public health nurse position from Detox.
Good morning.
Morning.
Both of the requests are under the supervision, one of Troy and Detox, and the other are under Jamie's programs. These are three, the public health nurses, there's three RNs, one retiring, and the other two are leaving for other employment, so we have three open positions just recently. And so, request to fill those three full-time positions. And the Detox LPN is also an individual who's leaving for other employment. It's a full-time position, we were only able to utilize her at .8 because she's attending school to further her education, but we filled in with a variable hour, of course, at extra .2, but this is a full-time position request to fill as well.
Questions? So it's three positions you want, you know, three for.
Three for the public health nurse, RNs.
And one for Detox.
And one for the Detox LPN, correct.
Any questions for these fine people?
Lots of vacancies, so we need to get filled.
For the Board's wishes?
Well, unless we're going to fill them, so I'll make a motion to approve. Now, second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the request. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Good motion for all of us.
Thanks.
Yeah. Okay. Let's see, we're still waiting for Dave. What did we get? Take a break, okay, we'll take a five minute break. Let's see, Steve, why don't you give us your update? I guess we're still waiting for Dave, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioner. On the last Tuesday, I attended the pick meeting, it's been well-covered here. That evening, I attended both the Board of Adjustments, the Planning, Planning Commission. On Wednesday, we'll continue on with the budget, department budgets, that two of those were addressed this, this morning. On Thursday and Friday, I attended the MACA Technical Days in St. Cloud. They covered a series of different issues, historic building rehabilitations and grant opportunities for, for those courthouses and buildings and campuses that are in the state and national registry. Listened to Dave Bartholomew from the State of Collaboration and Dispute Resolution and Dealing with Managing Conflict, the Board, Staff, and Constituents. We also talked about County Board Committee and Compensation. Some of the counties have now moved into flat fees for commissioners for the involvement of, of the alternates wanting to be involved in the meetings and not being able to be compensated, both the, the assigned and the alternate, and so some of them are going to, some of them are going to just a flat fee for commissioners, so, so those who want to attend are able to attend. We also talked about the role of economic development for the county. Most counties continue to have contracted economic development services. There are some counties that have moved to, or have had county staff as part of that economic development. I think the takeaway of the interesting part was, from that is, we've, we've recently had some conversation at the board level and, and the difference between North Dakota and Minnesota and the potential of, of us being happy with, with citizens moving here. And I think that the important part of that versus, versus also having business, and I think that one of the things that we learned on a national level, every $1 that comes in property tax received, citizens utilize $1.16 of that dollar. When we have commercial industry that come in for every tax dollar, they use 29 cents. And so when we talk about our economic development, and the importance of, of having some of those, not just people that come in here, but, but also new jobs, is, shows that importance. So it was a, it was a very good conference, a nice opportunity to, to network and learn some new things, so I appreciate the opportunity to be there. Yesterday, we attended the diversion Authority Chair Coordination Meeting, Commissioner Campbell has addressed that. The LEC and Correctional Facilities Owner Meeting, again, the tour was, it was very nice to see. It does not, from the outside, it doesn't look like that large of a space. It's amazing when you get in there, all the, all the things that they've utilized, as Commissioner Campbell mentioned, and well thought out. And also, just a note, it's hard to believe, but Wednesday is the last day of warranty on the LEC, which means we've been there for a year, and so, so Mr. Lanson is going to go around the building one more time this morning to, to make sure anything that gets on that list, and otherwise moving forward will be the responsibility of the, of the county. We, at the owners' meeting, as Mr. Campbell mentioned, we had another unexpected issue pop up. Our state inspector, which initially approved the smoke damper setup of the building, determined that it was not sufficient, and we had to look at adding an additional 19 smoke dampers, with the, the electrical and the sensors that go into that. And so we're looking at, well, we don't have a set number, but it could be up, up to stages of another $100,000.
So they approved it, though?
They approved it initially, and.
If I can, I, I think the way it was explained to us was, our local inspector approved it, provided that the state inspector agreed, that's the way that I.
Yeah, the state inspector initially approved it, and then there was a question of it, and our local said yes. He said, yeah, he would approve it as long as the state approved it, and, and the state representative said that, that at least initially that wasn't appropriate, so.
We do have a meeting scheduled, so we're, we're working on that.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're looking for some reconsideration on that, so it's.
What's the smoke damper? I mean, I mean, right when I see smoke damper, it's.
Ah, in the event of, yeah, in the event of, it's basically a tube that goes, that takes smoke out of the buildings in different areas, and also then has sensors in the event that there is fires to notify, notify the people in the building that there's an issue.
And not, not only that, but, you know, that, that's for what they found so far, and it, you know, they could determine that, that even when they, when they do the demolition of the next phase, that there even could be more, so it's, it's.
They're hopeful, they, they think, but yeah, like, like they said yesterday, they don't know for sure there could be other, other things that aren't shown in the drawings, that, that could be a challenge. Yesterday, yesterday afternoon, Darren and I had a meeting with a, a phone meeting with our labor attorney on another issue. Just for, for the Board's knowledge, the county program aided by statute is required to be out by August 1st, and so we're, we're hopefully anticipating an increase based on the, the approved budget this year in legislative session. MCIT has also announced a $343 million dividend, and so we should be receiving notification at the end of this month on what that will be, with checks coming out in November. Our, our campus study, we're looking to have a kickoff meeting on August 5th for our, our department heads and our renters. We, they will be receiving from Klein-McCarthy a, a survey that we will be requesting them to fill out, a week, week and a half to fill that out, and so that will provide information on what their current needs are, what their future needs are, and so we're, we want them to be aware, make sure you're checking your, your junk, junk email, because sometimes it ends up, it ends up there.
Always, it's always, it all goes there.
And then too, just, we received, compiled all the budget information today, and you received your first packets, so again, we'll be looking for your direction in the coming weeks, and you'd like us to move forward on that. And just a, a quick thing, I'll be on vacation next week, and also, my evaluation is due on coming up, and so we'll be looking at probably that, that next board meeting, and so that I'll get the information for you guys to fill out. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Dave, come on up.
Morning.
I've got one regular item, and then, everybody see I got an agenda addition on there? It's accounting deal. When I brought the, so if I start on the agenda addition first?
Take the first, yeah.
Okay. The agenda addition is for a, two, there's two walk and roll packers that we had brought in on March 19th. When I initially brought them in, there was a typo on the sheet, it was shown as total cost for both machi, both pieces at $56,645. I don't know if I did that or Eric did that, but we didn't catch it, it's actually $54,645. But then the other thing was, I didn't break them apart by unit numbers, I just split them down in the middle, I didn't realize that one has a little bit, one has a lift group on it, and the other one is going on a machine that has the lift group already that came with the machine. The new motor graders we bought have actual Ripper lift groups on them, so the numbers didn't really change or anything, it's just more specific, and it's for Ann for accounting. So unit 143, the total cost on that is $30,855, and 149 is $23,790, for a total cost of $54,645, which is $2,000 less than what was approved in March, so.
You have a motion for a correction?
I'll second the correction.
Motion and a second to approve the correction, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Okay, and then you have a position request?
Yeah, we've, we've got an unexpected vacancy with our motor greater position. Would like to get that filled as quick as possible. I'm going to try to work with Darren and HR Department and utilize the work that was done on May 30th, we did interviews, and we do have a couple other candidates that weren't offered the job when we backfilled the Glendon Motor Greater Position at that time. Might save us some advertising money in probably six weeks at time as well. Right now, we've got existing staff that's covering the maintenance duties out in the row log area at this time, so the quicker we can get somebody in there, the better, and we've got other good candidates, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the request. Any further discussion?
Just want to say my condolences to your staff as well.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Okay, we got a closed session. Motion to close?
So, close.
Second.
Motion and a second to go into closed session, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. So anything else? More adjourned.